Good evening and welcome to the Johnson City City Commission Meeting this Thursday, September 8th, 2025 in the municipal and safety building. It is 6:00 PM and we will call the meeting to order. Ms. Ball.
Yes, the first item is invocation by Reverend Paul Heffenstein from First Presbyterian Church to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance if we will stand.
Let's pray together. Gracious and loving God, we pray tonight for our community and its leaders. Bless us all with an overwhelming sense of thankfulness for where we live. Watch over those who protect us, our police officers, firefighters, and first responders. Watch over all our city employees. Watch over our schools, our students, teachers, and administrators. Bless everyone who calls Johnson City home. Give each of us generous hearts toward all of our neighbors in these deeply polarizing times. Heal our hearts from anger, resentment, and enmity in this season. Help us to choose kindness and understanding where we disagree. Give us unity and purpose as we all seek what's best for the people of Johnson City. Bless our city leaders and this commission in their deliberations and decisions on behalf of so many. Grant them wisdom and understanding. Lead us by your goodness, mercy, and grace to a time of peace and wholeness for all people. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ball?
Yes. Commissioners, the first order of business is to consider approval of the minutes for the regularly scheduled city commission meeting held on Thursday, September the 4th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Ms. Laues.
Commissioner Brock.
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler.
Epstein was not here.
Commissioner Wise.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox.
Yes.
Mayor Hunter.
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Yes, next is items under proclamations, resolutions, and presentations, and Mayor will make his way down. The first is an extraordinary proclamation honoring two of Johnson City Police Department officers for their heroism and public service with the greatest honor and award that an officer can get. We have Major Eric Doherty and we have Captain Hollis that will be joining you to help with these awards.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Ms. Ball. Yes, I'm Captain Mark Hollis, I'm with the Johnson City Police Department. Tonight we come before you to present two of the department's highest honors to two officers for their heroism and service. The award stems from a critical incident that happened this March, or this year, on March 12th. Officer Peters and Jonathan Workman had just cleared a call on Woodlawn Drive. I was the watch commander that night and was on the phone with Officer Workman, giving him information involving a call for service. I heard screaming and was disconnected. Moments later, we learned Officer Peters had been shot in both legs with a semi-automatic rifle. He was hit in the left calf and the right knee and could not move. Officer Workman moved Officer Peters to the back of the patrol car for cover and without knowing where the shooter was, began administering medical treatment for Officer Peters. Officer Workman then dragged Officer Peters more than 200 feet to a safe location, alerted emergency dispatchers, and pointed responding officers to the location for where he believed the shots were fired. He also directed responding officers out of the line of fire and told them where to locate so they would not get into a crossfire situation, all this while assisting Officer Peters that, or assuring Officer Peters that he had him and he wasn't going to die. On the night of the shooting, Officer Workman displayed courage involving the risk of serious personal injury or death. His quick actions of placing a tourniquet on Officer Peters' leg helped mitigate bleeding and possibly saved his life. For those actions, the Johnson City Police Department is awarding the department's second highest honor, the Medal of Distinguished Service, to Officer Jonathan Workman. Officer Mitch Peters sustained significant injuries after being shot with a large caliber rifle. He's already endured several surgeries and faces more in the months ahead. His road to recovery will be a long one, but he is improving each day. His serious physical injuries were the result of hostile behavior by another using a deadly weapon. Tonight, the Johnson City Police Department presents Officer Mitch Peters with the Silver Cross. Officer Peters, Officer Workman, it's, the Johnson City Police Department thanks you for your service.
Thank you, guys.
May we say something?
Yes.
Okay. To the officers who have sacrificed so much, we thank you. And to the police department here in Johnson City, we thank you. Your heroism speaks volumes about your character, about your commitment to your jobs, and to each other. Thank you very much.
Proclamation recognizing September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. This will be accepted by Stacy Papel.
I want you to get a picture too.
Yeah, yeah, we'll skip, you can see.
So I'll read the proclamation and then you can introduce and say a few words if you'd like.
Just a few.
Whereas, as the guardian of our liberties, the Constitution of the United States of America embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas, September 17th, 2025 marked the 238th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas, since its founding in 1908, the John Sevier Sarah Hawkins chapter of the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, a nonprofit, nonpolitical women's service organization whose members trace their lineage to the Patriots of the Revolutionary War, has been dedicated to promoting the Constitution's framework. And whereas, through longstanding partnerships with the community, the chapter supports local students by sponsoring American history essay contests, recognizing good citizens and youth leadership award recipients, presenting JROTC and ROTC awards, and during Constitution Week, providing educational materials such as library-bound books, informational posters, and patriotic bookmarks to the Johnson City area schools. Now therefore I, John Hunter, Mayor of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, in conjunction with the federal observation guaranteed by Public Law 915, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd Constitution Week in Johnson City, Tennessee, and encourage citizens to show reverence for this document and all that it has meant for our country and our freedoms.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I'm Stacy Papel, I'm the Regent of the John Sevier Sarah Hawkins chapter, and I have our Treasurer and former Regent, Jonda Burdette, and I have our second Vice Regent, Susan Kirby, our Chaplain, Marie Flanagan, and another former Regent, and our VAVs Officer, Lois Wetzel. Thank you very much. We, we'd like to partner with the city whenever we can for patriotic things, and we have a few dreams for the 250 that we might be talking to the city about, but thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you, thanks for coming.
I think this is a good time for all citizens to reacquaint themselves with our Constitution. You can buy, I just bought an annotated version of the Constitution this past week, believe it or not, and it's fascinating because it has a lot of backstories to the amendments. So, anyway, go read.
And I believe Congressman Harsbarger is giving away free pocket-sized copies of the Constitution.
Mayor, next is a presentation, excuse me, next is a presentation of six wastewater treatment plant awards. Tom Witherspoon will join you in making these awards.
Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, Ms. Laues, thank you, it's good to be with you tonight. These are our employees, and they've brought six wastewater treatment plant awards that they've recently received. They were received from two associations for calendar year 2024. They treated a combined total of over 5B gallons of wastewater, meeting all regulatory compliance requirements. As we've said previously during our budget sessions, for Johnson City to have three wastewater treatment plants for our size is a little unique, most of the time that is just one plant for a community, but we have three. These facilities operate 24/7, 365 days a year regardless of the weather conditions, and they treat a wide range of flows. With us tonight, Benji Whitehead, Assistant Director, Operations; Aaron Mullins, Chief Wastewater Plant Operator; Tim Profit, Maintenance Supervisor; Mark Swaggart, Operator 3 for the Brush Creek Wastewater Plant. It's our largest of three facilities, and it has three consecutive years and no more than one permit violation. The commission might remember that we had a ribbon cutting down there in December, a little chilly, but it went very well. Nick Street, Operator 3 for the Nob Creek Plant, has 13 consecutive years with no more than one permit violation, and this is the facility that the city recently approved additional funding for improvements over there over the next four years for reliability and capacity. Michael Rocker, Operator 3 for the Regional Plant, 15 consecutive years of no permit violation, and this facility was improved for capacity and resiliency back in 2011. Aaron, Mark, Nick, and Michael are all licensed operators with the state of Tennessee at the highest level for wastewater treatment. Mr. Profit is responsible for coordinating all maintenance activities and repairs not only for these facilities, but our two water treatment plants and over 200 pumping stations. These gentlemen all depend on Tim and crews to repair critical items in a timely manner to maintain compliance. They do a great job of working together. Again, these, the recognition of these facilities competes with facilities in cities that are much larger than Johnson City like Seattle, Washington, Chicago, Charlotte, Nashville, just to name a few. And in closing, I would say, based on their extended compliance record and the investment that's made by this commission and other commissions, and the daily work of these gentlemen, their staffs operating those investments, there is well-operated facilities as anywhere in the country, and I think that's a credit to both the staff and the commissions for those investments. So, Mayor?
Would any of you gentlemen want to say a few words?
Be careful for what you ask for.
Anybody got a PowerPoint they want to? I appreciate you guys. Honestly, I mean, it's great that we've got a new facility for you all, as many awards as you all get, we need all those additional walls to hang those plaques, but congratulations.
Mayor, the next item is a recognition of John Lane, Assistant Water Resources Director of Water and Sewer Services for his graduation from Water, the Water Professional Leadership Academy.
So, Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, Ms. Laues, Tom Witherspoon, Water Sewer Director. Tonight, we've got recognition for John Lane, Assistant Director, Water Sewer Services over Capital Delivery. Mayor John recently graduated from the Water Professionals Leadership Academy, as Ms. Ball mentioned. He was only one of 16 candidates selected from the states of Kentucky and Tennessee from the water and wastewater industry. He underwent a total of six two-day sessions held in various locations across both states. I remember John had to attend one in Louisville, Kentucky, when we had about four inches, five inches of snow on the ground, and made it there, and some of the other closer attendees did not. The curriculum is established to foster the development of the next generation in the water industry. John is the first employee from our department to, to complete this. He's a licensed engineer in the state of Tennessee. He has his Bachelor of Science from the University of Tennessee and a Master of Science from North Carolina State, both in civil engineering. Ms. Ball, you may want to mention an activity that's going to occur on November the 7th.
I am very honored to say that while it's very hard shoes to fill with Tom Witherspoon, I'm glad that, to announce that John Lane will be stepping in to fill the shoes of Tom in being our next Water, Water and Sewer Director for the City of Johnson City. Congratulations, John.
We got to balance them out?
You know, you don't get to get away with that, saying a few words. This is practice.
Thanks again, Commissioner, for honoring me tonight. I'm, I'm very much looking forward to this opportunity on November the 7th. Tom's been an incredible mentor over the last several years preparing me for this opportunity, so I'm looking forward to it.
And then, Tom, you got any more to say?
John is an outstanding young man, very competent, very well-respected by the community and the staff, and he will do an outstanding job in the role, and I congratulate him on that.
And Mr. Witherspoon, if you will stay up here with us, we have one more award for Water and Sewer. This is a presentation of the Golden Manhole Award from the Clean Water Professionals of Kentucky and Tennessee to Tracy Humphrey, Assistant Superintendent, Water, Sewer Line Maintenance.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, Ms. Laues, Tom Witherspoon, Water Sewer Services Director for 49 more days. So, we're proud of this presentation tonight, Mayor. We're proud of all of them, but this one's a little unique. Up here with us is Mike Manuel, Mike's over Line Maintenance and Construction, Superintendent there, Benji Whitehead, you've seen already, Assistant Director of Operations. Tracy Humphries, Assistant Superintendent of Sewer Line Maintenance. Tracy, thanks for, thank you for being here tonight. Okay. Tracy's been with our department over 32 years, and 2/3 of that has been in our sewer maintenance group. Tracy actually started as a temporary employee and then came onboard as a permanent employee. What were you doing when you were permanent? Permanent employee, construction?
Yes.
Yep, okay. He's one of the most respected and well-liked staff that we've had. He is a great resource of system knowledge. Our collection system, in other words, our sewer system, 780 miles, and he heads up all the cleaning, TV, inspection programs, smoke testing, system repair, summer intern support, manhole inspections, and almost all of these are on a 10-year cycle. The philosophy that he's performed his work in is if it's program work, you don't get called out in the middle of the night if you fix it when you find it. And he has shifted the way that our system operates significantly. And I mentioned, I believe, in the, in the memo, that our overflow reduction during Tracy's tenure here, for a lot of reasons, but he's a big part of it, I believe, went down almost 72%. He was nominated for the Kentucky-Tennessee and Clean Water Professionals Golden Manhole Award, which is for a system operator. We weren't sure what the plaque was going to look like. We thought it might actually be a golden manhole lid. It was not. He is our first employee in the department to receive the award, and so, Mike, do you have that for the mayor to present to him? Well, we've, we've got just one more thing that we need to give Tracy while he's up here, so, John, if you might get that ready. So, well, we'll go back, okay? Let's see here. All right. So, one thing that as the Water Sewer Director I've experienced for some reason, and I'm sure the fire chief and the police chief get the same thing, but for some reason, family and friends, strangers, and even commissioners, send me photos of unique parts of water and wastewater system. I have photos of fire hydrants from St. Louis, Missouri, meters and valve boxes from Charleston, South Carolina, manhole covers from Wisconsin, water tanks from South Carolina, Kentucky, Virginia, pumping stations from Pennsylvania, and the list goes on. Well, and John, this wasn't in the job description, sorry, you'll, you'll start to get those photos also. Early this year, one of our retirees, Gordon Cox, who did an outstanding job for many years operating our water and wastewater plants, sent me photos from Slovakia in Eastern Europe where he and his wife Linda were traveling. And when I received the photo, I, I thought I was a learned man on wastewater systems till I saw this photo, and I realized I didn't know everything about wastewater. So evidently, this sculpture is known across Europe. It's in a town in Slovakia that I cannot pronounce the name to. The name of the sculpture is Chummel, and in Slovakian that means "the watcher," and it's incredibly popular with tourists because if you touch the top of their head, the wish will come true if you keep it, keep it secret forever. So, John, could you bring up something that will go, that's not quite a golden manhole, but it will go well with Tracy's plaque? You got to wrap it for him.
Congratulations, we're thankful for your service and, and your dedication to the city.
Thank you very much.
Would you, would you come up for a picture?
Oh, good, yeah, okay. Can I get on your side? Yes.
We have no items under public comment on the agenda. The next order of business is under consent agenda.
Before we move on, though, I do think it's worth acknowledging the Water and Sewer Department more broadly. There are a few functions that the city is involved with that if they just stopped working would be more disruptive. It's probably the most overlooked department. It's solid waste, people just assume things happen, and they only happen because of the work you all do, and I think as a city, we've seen time and time again, whether it was the freezes a year or so ago at Christmas, or during the hurricane, or these types of things, the work you have done leading into those times has been, in many cases, the difference. And I, I think our residents are well-served to be reminded of that every chance we can remind them, so thank you all.
I think I would add another unique thing to Water Sewer, and Mr. Witherspoon, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but now that we've had the announcement of Mr. Lane as, as the new Water Sewer Director beginning in November, that's just the third director since the city started providing these services, is that correct?
So you're saying third director since water was invented?
I believe you're going to have about 50, starting 52 years of consecutive service of Water Sewer Directors, and so he will be building on that.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Consent agenda, I'll start to my right. Commissioner Fowler, any items? Vice Mayor?
Nothing.
Commissioner Brock?
Nothing.
Oh, okay.
No, no questions, I'd move approval.
Ms. Laues?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball?
Commissioners, your next order of business is under ordinances, a second reading. This is item 7.1, which is ordinance 4928-25. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to abandon an existing sanitary sewer easement located at 2715 North Roan Street with property owned by the Pritchett Family Limited Partnership. And I would remind you that this is a public hearing. And I think Tom Witherspoon is going to cover this one, he may have stepped out to congratulate them, but, John, you want to cover it?
Good evening. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball. So before you tonight is ordinance 4928-25 on second reading. Mentioning again, this is off North Roan Street, near the Cootie Browns business right there from the Pritchett family. This is before you for second reading for the easement abandonment that goes parallel to their property line. So kind of getting your bearings again, you see where Cootie Browns is here, Sartan Drive to the north, and then North Roan Street to the east of this property. Here's kind of a rendering of what is proposed. So what is green is already the sewer line that is inactive, that's currently active and remaining in service. What is highlighted in yellow is before you for the second reading for the easement abandonment. No changes from first reading. Okay, thank you. Public hearing. I will open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against is welcome to come up. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
Move approval.
Ms. Laues?
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
Next order of business, Commissioners, is a second reading. It's of ordinance number 4930-25. This is the second reading and public hearing of an ordinance providing for the conveyance of a portion of right-of-way owned by the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, located at the Knights Civil District of Washington County, Tennessee, at the Well Inc., upon the terms and conditions contained herein, and repeal all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball. I'm Steve Willis, Assistant City Manager. As you recall from first reading, this is for the allowance of a conveyance of approximately 700 square feet of property on Walnut Street. This conveyance would be from the city to the Well, which, as we all know, built a new facility there on Walnut Street. Staff recommends to you this conveyance based on two factors. The factor that we have an encroachment that you see in this dotted line on the actual property that the Well would be purchasing, as well as this would allow us to square the property lineup for the Cherokee Stormwater Project. Since first reading, there has been some discussion between our attorneys, the attorney representing the city, who is Carl McInturf, as well as Ms. Marshy Walker, who is representing the Well. Due to their discussions and their research on this piece of property, we have modified the language in the quitclaim deed very slightly to just surrender any interest that the city may have in this small sliver of land, and then it would be up to the Well, when they close on the property, to do the due diligence in terms of receiving a clear title. So we would recommend your approval, obviously, after public hearing.
I will open the public hearing for those wishing to speak for or against. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
If the next order of business is... Consideration of the third reading of ordinances. This is item 8.1, which is ordinance 4926-25. This is the third and final reading of FY 2025 supplemental budget ordinance, which is an ordinance appropriating additional funds to various departments and divisions of the City of Johnson City, Tennessee, with additional revenue from local, state, and federal sources.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball. I'm Steve Willis, Assistant City Manager. As you recall, Mr. Dustin Thompson, our Budget Director, had presented this the first two occasions. He's on vacation this week. This supplemental budget essentially just cleans up items that have already been approved throughout the year, and the primary driver of this is the schools' budget that requires a lot of cleanup due to the fact that their funding comes in at inconsistent times and inconsistent dollar amounts. So we would certainly recommend your approval.
Have there been any changes?
No, sir.
Move approval.
Second. Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes. Ms. Ball.
Next item under other is to consider approval... Of an initial bond resolution to provide funding for projects budgeted in fiscal years 2026 and '27.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball, Steve Willis, Assistant City Manager. As we move into this bond issuance, really, we have two items here for your consideration, and they really fold together. So as we look at the timeline for the issuance, what you have before you currently is the initial bond public notice. So that must be approved first before we move into the authorizing resolution. What this will do, should you approve, it would start a 20-day notice period whereby the public could comment on this bond issuance, and that will be posted on our website, what that process will look like, as well as posted in the newspaper, as is required by state law. Once that 20-day period expires, we will, should you approve the next item, we would be authorized to go ahead with the bond issuance. We anticipate that would happen in October, and then the bond would actually be funded in December. And none of the items that this bond will cover are, would be a surprise to you, but for the benefit of the public, we want to cover the items that this bond will fund, the first one of which, which is the Newtown Acre School. Our estimated total cost that we've set forth for that is $45 million. This issuance will be for the first $25.55 million of that project. Then we will issue the remaining amount approximately early summer of next year to take advantage of hopefully lower interest rates at that particular point in time. So that's the largest piece of this issuance. You also recall that we had several public works projects that we were including in this bond, a total of 13 million. However, we plan to issue 6.65 million at this point in time. Those projects include the widening and signal at Rockingham Road and North Roan Street at a total of $1.65 million, the widening of Christian Church Road and Boons Creek Road at $3 million, and then stormwater projects totaling $2 million. The final item in this issuance would be for water sewer infrastructure projects, again that you've heard about in the past. The first of which is the Sinking Creek Sewer Upgrades for a total of $8 million, the Nob Creek Aeration Project, which is $3 million, the Nob Creek Bridge Flyover Utility Relocations in the amount of $2.8 million, the H Station Replacement and Gravity Sewer Extension at $5.5 million, which is the project necessarily for the Keebler Development in Gray, and then Pressure Zone Improvements of $2.5 million. So those total $21.8 million in total water sewer capital projects that this bond would cover. So that leaves us with a total of $54 million in this issuance. And as we look forward to what that does to our current debt level service, I know this is a very busy slide, back up here, very busy slide with all the colors. Each of those colors represent a bond that has been issued in the past, in the remaining amount, a balance on each of those bonds. So you see our current debt level in the general fund is around $10 million. You see, highlighted in gold, the new issuance that we will do this fall, should you approve. You see kind of a candy-stripped block beginning in FY 2027. That would be for our issuance that we would do next year to fully fund the school. And then you see in FY 28 and '29, as the bar gets higher, that's when we'll experience both principal and interest payments in full. And then you see the amounts begin to cascade down as we go out through the full 20-year term. Again, that's the general fund debt service. Moving on to water sewer, the water sewer is a 30-year bond rather than a 20, and you see basically the same process. What we'll be issuing now, the 21.8, should you approve, the full principal and interest payments occurring in 2028, 2029, and then you see as debt from previous bonds roll off, how the bars go down. Current debt service is about $8.5 million in the current year. And then finally, stormwater. As we mentioned, $2 million in stormwater as part of this issuance. Our current debt service is about $750,000 annually, and you see how that will increase with this, this issuance. And then we have a significant amount that will drop off in 2035, as you see that, that blue block at the bottom completely disappear. So that's what we're looking at in terms of the three funds. I'm happy to have Mr. John Werner here with us tonight from Knoxville. John works for Cumberland Securities, and he has been a tremendous help to Stephanie and I as we go through this process for the first time. We thank John for coming up. He's over my left shoulder, about three rows back. So John would be happy to answer any questions you may have, as would I, but certainly, he is the technical expert when it comes to bond issuance. So be happy to answer any questions.
Commissioners?
How many times will the mayor have to sign a piece of paper when this is all done?
Probably more than he cares to.
I think it's around 50, is what I remember.
And you would know.
It's good to know. Any questions?
Move approval.
Second. Ms. Lous.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
And as Assistant City Manager Willis alluded to, this is the second part of the item that has to be approved. This is to consider approval of authorizing bond resolution to provide funding for various projects and equipment.
So this is step two, as Ms. Ball alluded to. And John, I don't know if you want to come forward and add anything. You're more than welcome to, if you would like. And thank you for being here.
You're very welcome. Thank you, sir.
My name is John Werner. I'm with Cumberland Securities out of Knoxville, Tennessee. Thank you for the opportunity to be the city's municipal advisor. To answer the question, the detailed, well, let's back up just a bit. The initial resolution does just that. It declares what the city is going to be doing as far as issuing bonds on behalf of these particular projects. The detailed resolution gives a little bit more background on the method in which we're going to sell these bonds, the number of pieces of paper that you'll have to sign, Mayor, which is a very unfair question to ask, and that'll scare them to death, the way that the bond form is going to look, some of the general terms and conditions of the bonds within themselves, and it just basically is more detailed. And with the combination of the two, then we'll be able to sell those bonds late October and early November, but certainly have everything funded by the first of December.
Any comments? Questions?
Well, and just, this is the first bond process that I've gotten to be a part of, and so really just pricing and how does that work and with...
Right, right. Well, to kind of give you a bit of a background, we will be publishing the initial resolution in the local paper on Friday, and it's, and once it hits that paper, then that's the 20-day notification period that was mentioned earlier. During that time, we're also going to be contacting Moody's, possibly S&amp;P, to do the bond rating. And the reason why we might want to do two different rating agencies, we have found that with large bond sales, there are certain underwriters out there, and when we do this sale, we'll be notifying the entire world that Johnson City is going to be selling these bonds on this particular date. Excuse me, I lost my thought there just for a second. When we notify them of the entire world what we'll be selling bonds, then on the day of the sale, we will actually then take bids, and at a pre-designated time, down to the minute, then the bonds come, and then we will look at the pricing, and we will award those bonds based on tick, true interest cost, irrespective of coupon. What it is, is what's the actual cost of the money to Johnson City to borrow it. So in some cases, you might actually have what's called premium bonds, where someone's going to pay you more money for a $1,000 bond than the $1,000 piece, that instrument itself. You might have maybe possibly some pieces out there that'll be at a discount. But the combining of the two, once they do the math, the math on this, will determine the true interest cost. Then we'll be in touch with staff, possibly the mayor, about awarding these bonds to the underwriters, a very quick process. And then once we award those bonds, then we turn that information over to the underwriters themselves for them to ferret out their final numbers. We will do it on our end. We'll start notifying bond counsel, who will start putting together all the closing documents. There'll be a flurry of paperwork going back and forth. 99% of that will be done through us, okay? We don't have to worry about bothering Stephanie or her staff. We'll be taking care of all these things for us, and then we'll start scheduling the actual closing. We will have a bond document signing day in advance of the closing. Those documents, once executed, will go into escrow, and then once the, once everything has been given the final funding, and Stephanie says, yes, the money has hit our account, then we will then release those documents, and the bonds will be, will be, will be closed. And it's, quite frankly, it's rather anticlimactic at that point. But there is an awful lot of detail, an awful lot of work. Fortunately for the city, it's going to be completely behind the scenes, and you won't even know what's going on until, I'm sorry, Mayor, there is going to be a lot of paper involved.
You mentioned...
But Stephanie gets to join you on most of it, okay? So you'll, you'll be in good company.
I think you've mentioned that on an issuance this size, that you like to use two rating companies.
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I did bypass that. We have found that some of our, because of, when you start having issues of this size, there are underwriters out there that have certain requirements, meaning that bond issuances have to have two bond ratings. So we'll get one from Moody's, and we'll get one from S&amp;P. That's not necessarily true in all cases. Traditionally speaking, Johnson City has used Moody's, okay? But it depends on how the market's reacting, and because of our presence in the market, because the amount of time that, the number of bonds and clients that we represent and that sort of thing, we get a pretty good feel on how the market's reacting to that, and we'll determine whether getting, you know, two bond ratings will be advantageous or not. It's just an option that the city has.
If nothing else, I will move for approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lous. Thank you, John.
Commissioner Brock?
Yes.
Commissioner Fowler?
Yes.
Commissioner Wise?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cox?
Yes.
Mayor Hunter?
Yes.
Mr. Willis, before you run off, on the next reading on this, could you also provide us with what this does to our overall debt and then the debt service? You know, we, as a commission, have, you know, come up with a kind of an area that we don't want our debt, our debt service to exceed, and just kind of, you can do it next time, that's all right.
I have those percentages with me, if that would be helpful.
Yeah, this is only one reading, all right.
And I'm sure that impacts our ratings with the companies.
Yeah, if you've got that, then just...
Is there an ideal level to keep our ratings as strong as possible?
And we can definitely provide that. This is a resolution, so there won't be a second reading.
I got you, okay.
But in, but in terms of our charter-imposed debt limit, is, must be less than 10% of our assessed tax value, and where this will put us is at 3.5%, so significantly below that 10% cap. Now, as a commission, you have a self-imposed debt limit of less than 15% of the general fund operating expenditures and transfers out. So this will put us at 11.5% against that 15 or less target.
But the graph, the graph you showed also showed over the 10 to 12 years, debt beginning to roll off again.
Yes, sir.
And so that position is going to change every year.
It will, yes, sir.
And we get a new elementary school, long overdue, out of the deal.
Looking forward to that.
Thank you.
And more than likely, more awards out of the Water and Sewer Department.
Yeah, I want to see some more golden manhole. I didn't even know that was a thing, so.
Well, and just to understand, going forwards, as the Fed adjusts their rate, and maybe they adjusted this week, does that impact, you know, bond rates? And you said this may sell at the end of October.
Yes, sir, and it has affected positively so far. And as a matter of fact, from the time that we first worked with the city and given them some anticipated ticks for the, for this bond issuance, rates have gone to the favor of the city. And again, something we monitor all the time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Great question. I think we have, did we?
We voted.
On that, yeah. Ms. Ball.
Yes, the last item from staff is the City Manager's Report, and we have Cooper Reeves here to present that, and it is an update on the Johnson City Bills Mayor's Advisory
Cooper, I appreciate you presenting for me.
You are more than welcome, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Ball. My name is Cooper Reeves, and I have the fortune to serve as the city's Special Projects Manager, and I have the fortune tonight to share with you the progress on the J.C. Builds Mayor's Advisory Task Force. It was almost one year ago this month, specifically next week, that the J.C. Builds Initiative launched, and we have made great progress in our work, and I'm excited to share it with you tonight. So a brief background on this initiative. In 2020, the commission laid out the strategic plan to guide the growth of Johnson City over the next five years, and two of those goals were quality of place and future-ready infrastructure. The goal of quality of place focused on providing a community that provided access, beauty, and belonging, while future-ready infrastructure focused on investing in strong and reliable infrastructure that also supported growth and innovation. Both of these goals are impossible to achieve without the help of our builders and our contractors and our developers in Johnson City. So this is where this goal started to come from. In expanding the city's relationship among the city with the building and developing community has been an important priority for the city for many years. City staff was tasked with identifying ways to improve our standing in relationship with this industry, and the ideas really started to take... And the ideas really started to take shape when the commission hired City Manager Ball in 2022. That is where we thought of the who, the what, when, where, whys, and hows of partnering with our developers and builders, which led us to the creation of J.C. Builds. J.C. Builds fully launched in September of 2024, when we held our first Mayor's Advisory Task Force meeting. And since then, we have been working with this group of people to carry out the commission's goals of quality of place and future-ready infrastructure. J.C. Builds is a citizen-driven effort to build trust, strengthen partnerships, and increase accountability between contractors, builders, and developers. And together with city staff, those relationships are helped shaping the future of our community and helping us reach our goal. And that goal is to identify and correct obstacles to successful development in Johnson City. Our J.C. Builds team aims to achieve this goal through three different objectives, the first being consistency. We want to ensure we are being fair and equitable in the way we interpret code, conduct inspections, and carry out our processes and regulations. Our second objective is customer service, how we work with our citizens, and how we want to ensure that they receive positive interactions and elevated service. And the third is culture. We are working to build a culture where builders and city employees can achieve and thrive with support and accountability. And each of these three objectives are helping us meet our goal through a three-part structure. J.C. Builds relies on the work and effort of the Mayor's Advisory Task Force, our quarterly roundtables, and our internal process improvements. Each of these efforts, through each of these goals and through each of these departments and work and staff and all the people who put time and effort into this are helping us reach that goal of successful development. So the first leg of J.C. Builds, the Mayor's Advisory Task Force, this is the advisory group that meets every other month to guide the work of J.C. Builds. This is the group that sets priorities, shares ideas and concerns, and works with staff to identify policies and processes that need improving. And as you can see, our 13-person task force includes builders, developers, architects, businesspeople, and nonprofit leaders. So we have a very engaged team that is very well-rounded with the needs of the community at heart. Second leg is our quarterly roundtables, meeting in the months that the task force does not, the roundtables are open to the community and allow for people to come and share feedback with the city, ask questions, inquire about why things operate the way they do. And we get to work with them and tell them about the work we're doing, development trends, long-term planning. Yes, Mayor?
I was just going to make sure. So these, these meetings, are they publicly noticed?
We do our best to get out to the entire community with our developers, but we can absolutely work on getting it out to the full community at large, not just our builders and developers.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, absolutely. We meet on Friday mornings every other month, so just one Friday a month of the every other month. And we are currently averaging 30 to 40 attendees per roundtable. And the third piece of J.C. Builds is really where the rubber meets the road. This is where the internal process improvements come into play. City staff take all of the ideas, feedback, concerns, insights from the task force and the roundtables, and we start to work on plans to address them. This process involves cross-departmental meetings, conversations with other municipalities, and reviewing our software and tools. And our internal team includes staff from multiple departments that work with our builders and contractors and developers a lot. Since having our first task force meeting a year ago, we have worked with the 13 individuals to seek their input on the J.C. Builds Initiative and our priorities. We've discussed our fees and charges structure with them. We've reviewed our permitting and building software, CityView, and also surveyed our internal CityView users. We have process mapped four of our building processes with them, and we've also kept them informed on department structures and staffing. And since our first roundtable in October of 2024, we have engaged over 100 building, contracting, and developing companies to include them in the process and gather their input and priorities, as well as keeping them informed about our building and permitting growth, our Horizon 2045 Growth Management Plan, our housing needs assessment, our soil erosion control bond, the Nob Creek Overpass project. And we also took our roundtable attendees through the process mapping activities. So the past year, from the inception of J.C. Builds until now, we have been very focused on listening and learning and trying to soak up as much information as possible, from listening to grievances and concerns to deep diving our processes and procedures. We have taken all this information to then start taking concrete steps to start identifying and addressing what we want to fix and change. And we have already taken great steps of improvement, including hiring Whitney Hodges as our planning manager, restructuring the planning division to fall under the Economic Development Department, and also remodeling our Building Services Department to now include facilities, permitting, codes enforcement, and inspections. And this department is now under the leadership of Brian Ross, who's a valuable team member, because Brian brings his city experience, but also his private side experience and his private sector background. So we are able to know what developers and contractors are thinking, because Brian's on our team. We've also set up new ways for citizens to let us know about their interactions and experiences through our permit counter survey. We have also put a great emphasis on having City Manager Ball and Assistant City Managers and city staff available at J.C. Builds events. Again, we want them to come ask questions. We want them to learn. And we want them to see that we are trying to be transparent in the work we're doing on this initiative. And again, this all comes back to building a culture where we can allow people to be honest without the fear of retribution or conflict. And it's because of that culture that we've been building that we are able to explore more ways to ensure successful development in Johnson City. And right now, our team is working on several items, including researching what other communities are offering contingent approvals, the ability to move on in a building process while still addressing something that needs to be fixed. We're also discussing what we can do to streamline smaller builds processes, to cut down on waiting times and make sure we're not having any bottlenecks. We're also meeting with permit and building staff from our neighbors here in the tri-cities, but also all the way down to Knoxville and Chattanooga to see what works for them, what they're experiencing, what experiences they've been able to learn from, and what we could do to improve and grow. We have also relaunched our internal CityView Task Force that will take a substantial deep dive into this BERT permitting and building software to see what it does, what it doesn't do for both staff and contractors, and see what we can do to address those. And finally, with the task force, the roundtables, and the staff, we are going to be able to accomplish even bigger and even bolder things together. And going back to those three objectives of J.C. Builds, we are going to ensure we're still focusing on consistency. We're going to ensure that we're conducting our operations in a fair and equitable manner. We're going to continue to work on our customer service. We want every citizen who has an interaction through any piece of the building process, that their interaction is positive and that we meet their needs in a positive and timely manner. And we are never going to stop developing our culture. We are all on one team. Johnson City cannot grow without the help of our contractors and our builders and developers. They are an integral piece to the success of our community. And we're going to continue building ways to achieve new success and new avenues with them while ensuring that the safety and service to our citizens are never compromised. These are not overnight fixes. As you can tell, these are things that we want to continue working on. These are not things that we put on a checklist and then mark them off. These are objectives that we want to achieve, and we want to achieve them fully. And we believe that the first year of the J.C. Builds Initiative has gotten us so much closer to reaching those. And I will just say that our next roundtable is Friday, October 17th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Langston Center. We invite our community members to come, hear about what city staff is working on, share their ideas. And also, if anybody would like to receive the invite for that or information, they can email us at jcbuild@johnsoncitytn.org, or they can look at our new webpage, johnsoncitytn.org/jcbuilds. Commissioners, that is all I have for you tonight, but I am more than happy to answer any questions about this initiative.
Thank you, Cooper.
I just want to thank Cooper for the presentation. I want to acknowledge, this initiated under Commissioner Fowler during his tenure as mayor and has continued under Mayor Hunter. We have known we had opportunities in this area for some time. And so the people that have been invited into these conversations are the ones whose experiences are most directly related to working within these functions of the city. And so a lot gets said about how the city does business or how the process has evolved. And you'd think things are all happening, you know, kind of in clandestine meetings. This is a perfect example of inviting the right people to the table to have the right conversations. And so this has been a very open process. I also think it's worth noting that we're not voting on anything here. And the reason we're not voting on anything here is that this is an operational project. And it's an operational project that happens under the auspices of the commission's strategic priorities, as you rightly noted early on in your presentation. But this is something happening under the leadership of the city manager, this commission's sole employee, the chief executive of the city. And so the reason we're not voting on it is also, you know, the reason this is so important is it is the tone and the tempo. It's the drumbeat of the thousand employees who make up our city. Now, not all of them are involved directly in, in this particular component, but many of our departments touch this experience for those developers. And I think a lot of the time, what happens is people are simply communicating past one another, or we have systems that are working perhaps in some ways, but not in another. And a conversation like this is how you begin to see where things are achieving some level of friction. And so I want to acknowledge the city manager specifically and all of her staff that have really been a part of driving this now over the last year plus, and, and reiterate my commitment on the strategic vision side of things, that this is really important, because we're at a point of growth in our community, that if we don't get good at doing this and doing this consistently where we value life, safety, and efficiency as both equally important and, and not one to be sacrificed to the other in either direction, we're going to have a community that our children can't afford to live in. And so this is a really important question to be dealing with. And I want to thank everybody who's been dealing with it, especially Tony Seaton, who has chaired this through the whole effort and I think has been uniquely equipped to do it as well as he has.
Thank you. Commissioner Brock?
Commissioner Wise, you said every single word I was going to say. That was just well done, well done. I do want to thank all the employees in the departments that are now kind of picking the covers up and looking at their jobs and looking at how it fits into, to this, you know, continuous improvement project that you're working on. Definitely thank Ms. Ball for your leadership in this. And I do want to throw another accolade in for former Mayor Fowler, who had come up with this idea, really kind of your first term into your mayorship and got it going now. And you get to take all the glory for it. But no, it's, it's a great project. I hear from people out in the community who are participating in this, and they're, they're very positive about the way the city's approaching it. And thank everyone for your part in that. And that includes us. And so to be able to go to the roundtables and to listen to, to the groups, you know, the way we hear about things oftentimes in the building world is when we get a call, right? And so there's not anything we can do to fix anything. But I think through this process that we, you know, we get people focused on that and perhaps get them involved in it as well. So, but thanks, Cooper, for your leadership in it. I know you're fairly new. How long have you been here now?
Four months.
Four months, wow. We do a grand job, so thank you very much.
Yeah, you're already a seasoned pro. And just, I think this is great to have kind of a year of kind of information gathering, but I think you're kind of the right person too to help staff kind of spearhead the next step of just kind of putting things into place. And you highlighted some just leadership changes and having Brian Ross and our new great planning director. And we've, we've got a fresh staff that can be excited about this stuff and existing staff in the building department that are, you know, having to listen to conversations about how they can approve, which isn't always the easiest thing, but everybody seems to be very open to it. So, and, and you do a great job. So thank you for putting it together too.
I agree, Cooper. You did a great job. So thank you. And thank you for that concise, complete explanation of what's been going on. So again, I want to thank City Manager Ball. When she first interviewed and came over, I talked with her about the things that I was concerned about. And one of them was our development, our group of people that were building and doing things in Johnson City, and a group of people who were not doing anymore because of how hard it was to do things in Johnson City. So when I told her we really needed to get this done, I had it on my priority list, and thankfully she put it on her priority list. And we got this done before I finished being mayor so we could get it started. And I'm glad we've continued on with this. And I think it means a great deal to Johnson City to make it easier, but safe. That was my big deal. I don't mind anything being easier as long as we're not cutting corners. So I don't think we're doing that. I think we're doing it the right way. I appreciate the task force and Tony, and Tom Seaton, Tony Seaton, I keep getting the brothers mistaken, but Tony Seaton running this for us, and he's doing a great job. And I've been able to attend a few more of them since I'm not mayor anymore and just to see where it's going. And I think it's going in the right direction. I appreciate everybody's work on this. So thank you.
Cooper, not just yourself, but a great job, as well as Lexi, Alicia, Jason Miles, and all the others, public work, or Water and Sewer who've been involved. And I've been to almost every advisory board meeting and building community workshop. And, you know, I think you'd mentioned culture earlier, and I've heard the word process several times. And culture starts with process. And part of that process has been these meetings where we're building trust, teaching from both sides, the building community teaching us, and then us informing them of, from, from our perspective and working towards the center. And so I see that every, every meeting, the building of trust and the learning and the engagement, and pun intended, they are very constructive. And so anyways, great job, and we'll keep trucking. Thank you.
Ms. Ball, any other? Okay, I'll start to my right. You've been gone for a meeting, so.
I'm happy to be back and feeling like part of the world again after being sick for almost two straight weeks. So it's good to be back. I really don't have anything else for tonight, except Science Hill has a, one of their four home games this whole season is tomorrow night. So we get to come back home to play. So that's at 7:00. If anybody's interested in seeing Science Hill's Hilltoppers play football tomorrow night.
And it's homecoming, right?
It is homecoming tomorrow night.
Vice Mayor?
I don't have too much. Just a reminder of, I think we've got kind of our fall music lineup that's kind of come out for music downtown. And then also, I think, three different movies in the park that'll be coming up. I think the first one might even be, I think it's this weekend at Wing Deer. So they're great and fun and a great time to get out and enjoy our parks too, so.
Commissioner Brock?
I just want to give a shout out to our Parks and Recreation Department. I went with my grandson to Myrtle Beach, South Carolina to play in a baseball tournament, but they moved it to Conway. And the ballpark we went to, it just made me look around and be so grateful for what we have here, not just from a facility standpoint, which is bar none, some of the best anywhere, but from our staffing standpoint, that they take care of it and they look after it, particularly when there's a big tournament there. And so I took a picture of one of the elements that you would have at a ballpark, like the bathroom. And I thought I-
Did you send it to Tom?
I'm, I'm going to send it to the mayor of Conway and just say, you know, you ought to do something better. But anyway, thanks to our parks. We have some of the best parks anywhere, bar none, anywhere. And as soon as we get Buffalo Mountain, a natural designated area, then we'll be whole, I think. So let's keep working at it. Thanks.
Commissioner Wise?
I represent the commission on the JCDAs. We've not had a meeting since our last meeting as a commission, but as most people know, the JCDAs is currently involved at the John Sevier Center. And the process of moving the residents of the John Sevier Center is very much actively occurring in, in the coming days that that is happening. And so there are some opportunities where the community can participate in that. But that is happening, and that is a major milestone in the life cycle of that project and brings us to another chapter relative to the John Sevier Center.
That is very exciting.
And I'm going to add one other thing is just to go back to the start of the meeting and just Officer Portman and Officer Peters. And, you know, I think it, some news cycles hit a news cycle, and people can be kind of celebrated. And then sometimes things happen and they kind of don't even hit the news cycle and are aware of how special it is to have the police that we do have, and then two police officers like them that are out every day. And so I just wanted to mention them one more time, so.
If that is it, we will adjourn the meeting.